will now come to order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of each council meeting, we have an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city business. Our meetings are typically the first and third Tuesdays of each month, and the open podium portion of time is from 6:30 to 6:55. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (949) 8412 by noon of the meeting date, and if you get a recording, please leave your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are through, we do allow an opportunity for people to speak to us on an unscheduled basis. The open podium period of time is not recorded or televised. Again, if you have any questions about this, please contact the city manager's office, (949) 8412. We have, under proclamations and presentations tonight, we have a proclamation and the announcement of the Human Rights Award process, and at this point, I would like to call to the podium Sandra Fallardo, who is the Chair of our Human Rights and Diversity Commission.
Good evening, thank you for having me again. My name is Sandra Fallardo. As the Chair of the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, it is my pleasure to announce the start of the Human Rights Awards process for 2014. The goal of the Human Rights Award is to recognize Eden Prairie individuals, non-for-profit organization, businesses, and youth who have worked to create an inclusive community spirit through actions, activities, and programs. There are many talented groups of individuals and individuals in the community, and the HRDC is proud to be able to recognize outstanding citizens who embody the Eden Prairie Human Rights Manifesto. Nominations will be taken until March 10th. The commissioners will review and select award recipients at our meeting on April 9th. The awards will be presented at the city council meeting in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fallardo. As I mentioned, there is a Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation, which I would like to read. Whereas the City of Eden Prairie's City Council and Human Rights and Diversity Commission sponsors the Human Rights Award program, recognizing those who work to create an inclusive community spirit through their actions, activities, and programs; and whereas the City of Eden Prairie recognizes that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream and dedicated his life to helping freedom exist for all people through his commitment to human rights and his nonviolent philosophy; and whereas the City of Eden Prairie reaffirms its commitment to fostering diversity in our community through the Eden Prairie Manifesto, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Eden Prairie hereby proclaims 2015 as a year to celebrate human rights and diversity, and asks all residents to continue their commitment and concern for equal rights for all persons, to dedicate themselves to helping those who do not yet share in that freedom, and to join the City of Eden Prairie in recognizing and celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s dream. So, thank you for the presentation, Ms. Fallardo, and we appreciate everything the Human Rights and Diversity Commission does for our city, and we hope you get a lot of applications. Thank you. We have some presentations coming up, basically in the form of donations from the community to our city, but before we get into those, I'd just like to mention that there was another presentation of sorts that took place in our city building this morning. We had the French Legion of Honor Award being presented by the honorary French consulate, who is in Minneapolis, and it was presented to Eden Prairie resident William Bud Schwartz for his service during World War I and II, I'm sorry, World War II. And it was a well-attended event, and it was just fascinating to hear about the things that he did for our country during that war. So, congratulations to Mr. Schwartz. I'm sorry. All right, the first item we have is a donation of an artist's drafting table to the Art Center. Mr. Lothammer?
Yes, Your Honor, council members. As you know, all of our donations need to be by state law, accepted by resolution, so you'll be doing that tonight. But I think even more importantly, to recognize those who have contributed to our city, and we have individuals on tonight, but we also have our community groups and organizations. And without them, we couldn't do many of the things that we do and serve our residents in the way that we're able to serve them. The first one, we had a very nice drafting table that we were able to make use of at the Art Center, and I understand it's being well-used there, and something that's really added to the Art Center itself, given by an anonymous donor.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of an artist's drafting table at $115 to be used by the Eden Prairie Art Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Then we have a donation from the Lioness Club to the Theater and Band.
Yes, several in a row from the Lioness Clubs. We really want to thank them for their generosity. The first one is for the Theater Band. It's to go towards a trailer for hauling equipment, a $1,000 gift from them.
Do you want to go down the line here or something?
You're next.
There's a bunch of them, which we're really thankful for. Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,000 from the Eden Prairie Lioness Club for the purchase of a six-by-12 trailer to support the Eden Prairie Community Band and the Eden Prairie Players Theater Programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Another Lioness donation, this time to the Outdoor Center.
Yes, this is for $1,027 for Lake Study equipment that will benefit many of our programs that occur, occurring down at the Outdoor Center, as well as some that we do jointly with the local schools.
Okay.
I move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $1,027 from the Eden Prairie Lioness Club for the purchase of Lake Study equipment for the Starling Lake Outdoor Center.
Second.
All in favor of motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. And yet a fourth donation from the Lioness Club to the Senior Center.
This is $600 towards a wood lathe, which is a piece of equipment that we'll be using in the wood shop at the Senior Center.
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $600 from the Eden Prairie Lioness Club for the purchase of a wood lathe for the Eden Prairie Senior Center Workshop.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, a Lions Club donation to the Outdoor Center.
Yeah, you remember, over the year, we've received several from the Lions as well. This one is for $200 towards the Outdoor Center for some of the youth programs that occur there.
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $200 from the Eden Prairie Lions Club for Outdoor Center programs.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I'm thinking the men are beating the women 13 to 1 there on the Lioness and the Lions, so Lions get going, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, the women are beating the men.
I said it wrong. The women 13 to 1, okay, sorry, very, very sorry.
My wife is now a Lioness, so she'll appreciate that.
I meant, yes, women to men, 13 to 1.
Well, here's a man's one coming up. Lastly, the State Farm donation to the Senior Center, and Gordon Williams, who's on the Senior Center Advisor Council, is an employee there and makes this happen.
Yeah, we have seen this every single year for quite a few years now, where they match his hours of volunteering at the Senior Center, and he specifically would like this to go towards the volunteer appreciation lunch that is held there. And so, we're thankful to both State Farm, but also to Mr. Williams. He's somebody that puts in a lot of time there, both as a participant and as a volunteer, so we appreciate all he does.
Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from State Farm Company's Foundation on behalf of Gordon Williams for his volunteer service at the Eden Prairie Senior Center to be used toward the 2015 Senior Center Volunteer Recognition Event.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Once again, thank you to all of these groups, the Lioness Club, the Lions, State Farm, and Mr. Williams. Truly, without these donations, some of these events just wouldn't happen. They really are able to finance some of the nice things that we do within our community. So, is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Anything to correct, change? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the city council minutes from the workshop held on Tuesday, January 6?
Move approval.
Second.
Any items to correct? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I need to abstain.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting held that same date, January 6?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any items to correct there? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Move approval. Second.
Any items to pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The first public hearing tonight is a resolution approving a modified tax increment financing plan for District Number 16. Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The first two items are both very similar in that they are both related to modifying tax increment districts related to housing projects in Eden Prairie. I'll say at the outset that the first one, 16, we're going to ask that you continue the public hearing to the second meeting in February. That would be February 17th, because we are not yet complete with some of the pieces that are needed for consideration tonight, the agreement. I will say briefly, though, that this district was established in 1999. It's known as Lincoln Park Apartments. It provided 140 affordable housing units, and part of that TIF district was that those affordable units were provided for a term of 15 years. And we've done a few of these recently, as we've come up on other affordable housing developments. The city has provided a TIF for a percentage of the units to be affordable, that we've extended those districts to continue to offer the affordable, and most importantly, also have those count as units that are considered affordable by them at council and throughout the City of Eden Prairie. And this is one of those districts that would be extended for a term of 25 years from the date that the first increment was used, so that would be until 2027. So, Lincoln Park itself is a 186-unit apartment building located on Singletree, near Flying Cloud Drive. And as I mentioned, it was created, the district was created in 1999 to subsidize 20% of the total units for tenants with incomes below 50% of the median of the metro area, and 55% of the total units for tenants with incomes below 80% of the median income. So, on this particular item, we would ask that you make a motion to continue the public hearing, and that would continue the hearing and the action until the February 17th meeting and not take any action tonight.
Okay. Could somebody move to continue this, please?
I would move to continue until February 17th, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Do you have, do you want to go into some detail on the second one?
Definitely, Mayor, thank you. Mayor and Council, the second district, the other district that we're talking about tonight, TIF District Number 17, for Rolling Hills Senior Housing, also known as The Colony, was established in 2001 to provide 115 affordable units for seniors living at The Colony. At that time, it was for a term of 10 years from the date of the first year of increment. And similar to the other district, we are agreeing to extend the term of the affordable units, in this case until 2028. And this is the maximum that would be allowed by statute. I didn't mention that with the, with the earlier item. And the action with this, that you would be taking tonight then, would be to modify the plan and the management agreement, which would change the budget going forward to allow the district to capture the increment needed to continue for these units to be affordable. So, The Colony is a 142-unit facility for care of the elderly and consists of independent living units, assisted care units, Alzheimer's units located on Prairie Center Drive, just south of the Eden Prairie Center. And as I mentioned, which is similar to the other district, the increment is subsidizing 20% of the total units for tenants with incomes below 50% of the median for the metro, and 60% of the units for tenants with incomes below 110% of the median income for the area. So, again, another housing development in the city where the city was able to create a tax increment financing district to subsidize a portion of the units being affordable. And the, and the action tonight would be to modify the plan of the district so that could continue.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Getchell?
I do have one question, and that is, this is 25 years from when the first tax increment was collected from the district, so in 25, that's a maximum number of years. So, then what happens to all of these units? They all become market rate?
Mayor, Council, and Ms. Jeremiah could weigh in. That's a possibility. The, that may not necessarily happen, but the increment plan in the amendment would require that they be affordable, and if, if the district was decertified, it would not be necessary. It could still occur, but it wouldn't be a requirement.
Requirement, okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
This does use a part of our ability to do TIF housing financing, is that correct?
Councilmember Nelson, no, there, it really does not. There's, there's limits on bonding that come into play when you're issuing bonds, but there's not a limit with respect to the TIF.
I want to do this, because I think it's working well. I don't like the fact that we never get credit for when we add the housing back in from Met Council, and, but if it doesn't use up our TIF, but, though, we only do do so much. But like I say, this is working well, I want it to continue, but I wish there was some way that we could get credit for keeping this number of affordable units in our city rather than letting them go, and a year from now, getting them back, and where we would get credit. That, that would be a stupid thing for us to do, and we're not going to. But it would be also nice if somehow we could send the message that we could have, but it was stupid, and we didn't, and we want credit.
All right. Ms. Jeremiah?
Your Honor, Councilmember Nelson, we get credit every year for these units. We would lose credit if we didn't extend this TIF district, but in this manner, we will continue to get credit.
Councilmember Butcher?
No, I was just going to say.
Okay. Oh, no, we have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, this is a public hearing.
Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on this TIF district? Go ahead.
Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution approving modified tax increment financing plan, District Number 17, and second amendment to the project management agreement.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next public hearing is for O'Reilly Auto Parts. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a planned unit development, district review and concept review on .83 acres, and also a, with waivers. Also, a site plan review for, as you mentioned, a new O'Reilly Auto Parts store at 8868 Aztec Drive in Eden Prairie. Official notice of the public hearing was published in the January 8 edition of the Eden Prairie News and was sent to 32 property owners. This project calls for a 7,343 square foot retail and auto parts building, where the design is compatible with a mix of the single-family residential, commercial, and other office uses that are in the area. It also, as I mentioned earlier, is requesting three waivers for parking from 37 spaces to 33 spaces, a waiver on the front yard setback for the recycling and trash enclosure to 10 feet along Aztec, where the code would require 35 feet, and finally, landscaping planting islands to cover 4.4% of the parking area, where city code requires 5%. Staff feels that the waivers here are benefited by the enhanced architectural details in the design of the building that was changed, and the extensive landscaping and the enhancement that was made to the building and to the site while it was going through the review process with the staff and the planning commission. And it's my understanding, prior to holding the public hearing, that the project proponent is here, and he would like to provide you with a brief presentation and an overview of the proposed project.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to come over to that table, there's an overhead light that would show all your materials.
My name is Ben Patacik. I'm with CM Architecture, and I'm representing O'Reilly Auto Parts as the architect tonight. I'm going to guide you through some of our plans for this project, starting with a zoning map. The dark black rectangle in the middle is the site. It's 8868 Aztec Drive. It is just below Anderson Lakes Parkway and sandwiched between Flying Cloud Drive and Aztec Drive, and it is surrounded by commercial, community commercial, neighborhood commercial, and office zoning, and there is also some residential zoning nearby. This is just a survey showing that this is currently a vacant lot, and there's some vegetation, trees, and shrubs on the site, and it is relatively flat. The site at .83 acres is a trapezoidal shape, so it is somewhat difficult to fit everything on this unique shape. This is the proposed site plan. The proposal is for the front of the building to face Flying Cloud Drive for visibility. We did hold a neighborhood meeting in the fall, and we did get some feedback from the residential neighbors that they preferred this orientation, because the lights of the storefront and any signs, like a poll sign, would be away from the residential neighborhood toward Flying Cloud. The entrance drive is off of Aztec Drive, and as you enter, to the left is a loading area and trash enclosure. That trash enclosure would be surrounded by a decorative brick wall to match the building, and then also by dense evergreen foliage to hide that trash enclosure, and then the vegetation would extend along Aztec to screen that entire loading area. The drive continues along the side of the building, and then the main parking area is in front of the building alongside Flying Cloud Drive. That parking lot is also screened by a lot of landscaping, trees, and shrubs. If you can see toward the middle of the page is a sightline diagram showing that both sides of the parking lot are screened with landscaping, and then also that the RTUs on the top of the building are screened with the roof pitch as it is. This is a landscape plan. We are proposing a variety of deciduous trees, shrubs, perennials, and prairie grasses. We're proposing some unique features, including a rain garden between the building and the south property line, which will collect stormwater runoff from the roof. And we're also proposing a bike rack, which was requested by the planning staff. And as you can see, the majority of the landscaping screens the parking area. This sheet shows the variety of plantings that we're proposing, and the intent was to have a variation in color throughout the seasons. So, you'll see a variety here, both with the trees and the perennials and the grasses. I just included the floor plan to point out that instead of just a rectangle, we did add depth to the building with pilasters that range from 6 inches to 24 inches surrounding the building, so it's not just flat, there is depth on each facade of the building. And then finally, this elevation in color shows more of how we added architectural features to this building to allow it to fit into the context surrounding it, which included the offices and residential character of the neighborhood. We added a pitched roof, which is proposed as a dark brown metal roof. We're proposing awnings above the storefront and on two other facades. Those would be metal awnings to match the roof. There is a storefront glazing at the front, and then also a series of faux windows around just to break up the brick and stone facade. We're proposing three different tones of brick, which would range in colors from beige to dark brown. And then around the bottom of the perimeter, we're proposing stone, which is the sample I brought. I don't know if you can switch to that view, or if I should hold it up there. Yeah. And we'd like to select a stone that contrasts with the brick to, again, show a variety in depth and color. Some other features, features we added were decorative lighting around the building, and also the pitched roof with gables on the three dominant sides of the building. So, at this time, I'd like to know if you have any questions for me?
Questions. Councilmember Wixter?
Yes, I have a question for you. I have seen other of your stores. How does this differ from some of the other ones? I mean, is it a, not a cookie cutter, but is it similar to other, other of your designs for O'Reilly?
Not at all. We went through a lot of work with the planning staff to actually change the building. It's typically just a metal panel building with a very light gray panel, and then a very bright red storefront. It was clear that Eden Prairie preferred something different, and something that didn't just identify the store as O'Reilly, but identified it as something that was Eden Prairie. So, we wanted it to match other buildings, and the planning staff actually directed me to some shopping areas around town that they told me the staff had preferred. So, we tried to adopt some of those features, and that led to the pilasters, the different use of materials, and also the pitched and gabled roof.
So, is this more of an upgraded look than some of your other stores?
I would say this is an upgrade to the upgrade.
Upgrade to the upgrade.
Yeah.
We like to hear that. Okay. I, I'm okay for now. I might have another question.
Okay. I have a question, and that, oh, a couple of questions. Is there any vegetation that we see on this property now in terms of trees, bushes, that is remaining?
Yes. It's probably too small to see on the landscape plan, but we did have to follow the requirements for any existing trees that we removed that were deemed significant trees.
Right.
I believe there were six to seven significant trees, and we're only removing two that were actually where the building's located. The rest were fortunately around the perimeter, so we were able to keep those.
Okay, so there will be some, because there's quite a bit of vegetation on that property right now.
Yes, and, and so, most of it was not significant.
Right.
Trees, but most of what we're, we are keeping, and then we would have to replace the two that we are removing.
Okay. And then I wanted to talk about the, what, I don't know if this is your wording, but it's what we have in the staff report.
Sure.
The dense evergreen landscaping to provide screening from Aztec Drive and the neighboring properties. So, it's screening the whole area near the trash pickup area, correct?
Correct.
With Techneto arborvita, three-foot Techneto arborvita, which, I'm not sure, we had some arborvita in our backyard that we planted that, I think were columnar, and they became like 25, 30-foot huge arborvita. How big does this varietal get?
I believe it's limited to around six feet.
Okay. And you know the, so these are going to be planted close enough together that it will be a wall? You will not see the trash pickup area?
Yes, the intent is that eventually, after some mature growth, the arborvita will get closer to each other. They're spaced in a way that they would provide a hedge.
Okay. And then, I wanted to talk a little bit about the landscape planning, because you're getting landscape planting islands, you're getting a waiver on that, and I guess it relates to my question about parking, because when I.
Yes.
When I look at the parking plan for the site, and now I realize you went from 37 down to 33 spots, and granted, I don't do a whole lot of shopping at auto parts stores, but the times that I have been there to get wiper blades or something like that, there aren't a whole lot. there to get wiper blades or something like that, there aren't a whole lot of cars there. And the cars that are there are there for brief periods of time and then they go. And I have a hard time believing that you'd need 33 parking spots. So I guess I'm thinking that like we've done in some other places, I'd almost like to see proof of parking, but not actually paved over. I'd rather see some landscaping. Or was, there was an indication in the staff report given that if you reduced one parking spot, you could not get a waiver for landscape planting islands.
That's correct. It was kind of weighing that where if we had more landscape islands, we'd have to reduce the parking further, which was against the ordinance. But then if we don't add the landscape island, we're not quite meeting that other requirement for interior parking landscaping. So it's kind of a either/or situation because of the tightness of the site.
But I guess my question is, what is your experience with O'Reilly Auto Parts? Do you need 33 spots?
No, the reason we have 33 was to get as close to the required parking as possible.
Right. See, and that's where I'd love to see proof of parking and not necessarily have all that asphalt, but.
Do we have flexibility in our code to do that?
We've done it in the past.
Yes, we have flexibility to do proof of parking. I think the reason that it wasn't recommended in this case is that there was some concern that employees might park off-site and impact other properties. So there was, again, as was mentioned by the applicant, just a balance on the waivers and just trying to figure out what was the best fit for the neighborhood. But I think staff is open to the idea of proof of parking or if, you know, the council feels that they would like to see one of the other requirements met, like landscaping and lose one more parking space. I think staff is open to that as well.
All right. Mr. Russell.
Yes. Just to directly say, you do have, under the code, the flexibility to do this, you'd be swapping variances. So if you were of a mind, your motion would be to approve it subject to the condition that there be no waiver on landscape, landscaping, but a waiver, bring back to us a waiver for parking with proof of parking.
Okay. And then what would happen to subsequent owners of this site? The need for parking is determined by the square footage of the facility. So depending on that use, can we go back in and say, okay, you can come in here, but you're going to have to expand the parking and we're going to end up with a waiver on the landscape islands?
That is the purpose for the proof of parking. That if at some point.
Flexible.
Ms. Jeremiah deems it appropriate, then she gives the notice to provide the additional parking that's in the quote "plan," which is the proof of parking.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Case.
Is this appropriate time also to ask staff questions or are we, I can do this after a public hearing as well?
Is it for staff?
Might be for both, actually.
Okay, then just go ahead and ask.
So I don't know who can pipe in and maybe both, but I love history and I happen to know this part of the property was once owned by Northrop King. And I believe it was at the time they had various storage areas around that whole area for their large complex. And I just wonder if an environmental review has been done on the property and if so, what did they find?
We did have a wetland determination and that provided that there was no wetlands there. There were some historic wetlands, but since they actually were located somewhere near, or underneath Aztec Drive, so since the development of this area, those are no longer determined to be wetlands.
And I guess I'd like to ask staff this, and this maybe is true of any property across the city, but as construction's underway, if some unknown buried tank that we never knew was there is found, at that point, would staff somehow more involved or what would the dynamics of that process be at that point?
My understanding is that at that point, construction would need to stop and that the Pollution Control Agency or other state agencies who are involved with whatever is found are brought in to evaluate the situation. Generally, with the construction of this type, there would be a Phase One and a Phase Two environmental done before they start construction. But unless the city's involved with the financing, we usually don't see those documents. But I would think if there's financing involved, that's being done.
It's probably not unlike that, the whole area. I mean, there's even across where we had the construction of the townhome development and in the commercial. So this is nothing new. I just want to raise that thought of if, you know, we would be involved in that. And then my second question would be just from staff. How does this project handle its stormwater?
Your honor, Councilmember Case, there is a rainwater garden on the south side of the property and that is accommodating part of the stormwater system. I don't know if engineering wants to add to kind of the overall plans, but my understanding is that that is accommodating most of the site.
And then when a site cannot accommodate all of its own stormwater, there's a fund that it pays into?
They're either going to be part of a regional system or they're going to have to accommodate it all on-site. They don't, they really need, as I understand, need to meet the requirements unless there's been.
You're saying you don't think the rainwater garden will accommodate all of it, though?
That's more of a question for engineering, I think.
Then I'm asking engineering then.
I will, yes, I will attempt to answer your question. As the rules change over time, things always become, you're in the gray area. Aztec Drive, when that was constructed, accommodated some of the storm sewer, I mean, has storm sewer designed to pick up these sites? Not probably at a, I don't know exactly what, probably on a developable level, but I don't know what that number would be. But now today, you need to provide infiltration in addition to those storm flows. And what they've done is they've, as was mentioned by the proponent, they've got a rain garden on the south side of the building for the roof drainage. And then in the, on the north side of the building in the parking lot, there's an underground infiltration system that will collect and infiltrate most of the rest of the water. In those events, if there'd be a larger storm event, those would go into Aztec Drive and down into the system that's designed. And there are subcatch basins at the entrance that will pick up a lot of that parking lot drainage that would, on higher storm events, and route it into that underground structure as well.
So it is pretty much taking care of its own water, except in those 50-year, 100-year storms. And then I realize this is not like a typical gas station or something that really would be have gasoline and oil seepage, but I've, any of us that have been at auto parts stores quite a bit know that people walk out and they put oil in their car right on the spot and they change their light bulb right out in the parking lot, you know? And so there is some potential leakage and I wonder, as a staff, if we pay a little bit more attention to that when we're approving a place that may have more than, say, Target or something, some type of leakage of fluids. But it sounds like we are capturing that, so I'm pleased and it sounds acceptable to me.
Mr. Russell?
I was going to follow up on Mr. Case's question about the environmental review and I thought perhaps you were going to answer the question about the Phase One. Has the prospective owner obtained a Phase One environmental report? And if so, did it disclose any recognized environmental issues?
We do have a Phase One. I'm not familiar with the entire report, but I believe that would be addressed as we provide our construction documents. So I'm not familiar with anything particular to the site.
Has O'Reilly closed on the purchase of the property?
They have not. They wanted to get the variances or waivers approved before closing the purchase.
And are they seeking financing? Are they financing this through a mortgage with a bank or?
I'm not familiar with that end.
Your questions and comments about financing would come into play. One, if they haven't closed, any responsible purchaser is going to have done of Phase One and be highly unlikely to proceed with an acquisition if they were recognized environmental issues. And if they're financing this, then the bank would, or credit union, whomever, would want to see that Phase One and would not lend unless those issues were addressed.
But again, the city on some level will be, as we always are, involved, I would think, throughout the entire process. So whether it's, you know, not in this case, but if there were Indian burial mountains or anything that would be discovered at the time of construction, we would be involved. And so if there were any environmental issues, we would know about it. All right.
Councilmember Wixstrom.
Yeah, I'm not thinking so much about people changing oil out on your parking lot, but folks can't bring their used oil back to O'Reilly Auto Parts. And, you know, purchasing new and giving you their old stuff, they can't do that, can they?
No, and there's no services provided beyond the, beyond selling of retail parts.
Yeah.
So there's no servicing outside of the store in the parking lot.
And no containers to take old oil or anything like that.
Not that I know of, no.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on O'Reilly Auto Parts?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept review on 0.83 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review with waivers and zoning district review within the community commercial zoning district on 0.83 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions. And Mayor, did you want to?
Yeah, I think for reasons of eliminating one of the waivers and for aesthetic reasons and for anything we can do to reduce impervious surface is a better thing for the storm sewer system. I just think it's wise if we can go with the proof of parking and eliminate some asphalt and get the island plantings increased.
Okay, so then the council condition would be that we do exactly that, that we would eliminate the waiver for the landscaping and instead grant the waiver for the parking through proof of parking concept review.
Second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, since I am one of the 30 property owners that are around this, I do have to abstain from this vote.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Wixstrom.
I also just wanted to say, because I didn't have an opportunity to do so, I think this is a very appropriate business in this area, given there are other automobile-related businesses. So I'm really glad to see O'Reilly Auto Parts come in and it looks like it might pass, so congratulations.
How do you know?
You've got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. Council motion passes. Welcome, thank you. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ahlo.
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wixstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Case.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Okens.
Aye.
Next item is reports of council members and the next item was brought up by Councilmember Case, I think at our last meeting or was it in December? A resolution supporting legislation to increase or remove lump sum payout caps for Fire Relief Association retirees. Mr. Getcho, do you want to address that first?
Certainly, Mayor. As you mentioned, Councilmember Case brought up the issue that came up through the Fire Relief Association, Eden Prairie, of which Councilmember Case serves on, is appointed to serve on as a council member, that there is two possible pension programs of which firefighters can participate in. And one of those is the monthly defined benefit payout and there's also a possible lump sum payout option. And we are trying as much as possible, at least the Fire Relief Board is as well, to create more of a level playing field for the two and actually to encourage more use of the lump sum payout, as Councilmember Case mentioned a few meetings ago. One of the things that would need to occur would be a change in the cap or the top number of $10,000 that's set at the state legislature right now. And one approach would be to approach a legislature with the support of the city council through a resolution to see if that cap could be moved. So we have tonight representative from our board of trustees, Aaron Casper, to give additional background, maybe to correct me if I've missed anything or to add some more detail. But the action then tonight would be to pass a resolution supporting that change that would then be taken to the legislature as part of our lobbying platform and then also would need to come back at some point in time and be revisited by the Relief Association and the board. That doesn't necessarily mean that it would be adopted if legislation was changed, it would need to go back.
And Mr. Casper's the chair and also the 2014 firefighter of the year. I'm paying penance here for blanking on your name last meeting, so.
Thank you, Rick and Councilmember Case, your honor.
You're calling me, Rick, for a second. That was good, too. That would have been a good one.
Well, so appreciate you having me here to kind of give you some background and I think you did a great job, Rick, so no correction there. Essentially, what we're here for is to have you consider the resolution of support to go to the legislature. And to give you a little background, the process began certainly in our relief meetings, which Councilmember Case is a member of. But really what we're trying to do at the board level is to try to ultimately reduce some long-term disability in the, not disability, but long-term liability in the plan. And we feel as a board that being able to make that lump sum distribution more of a viable option to firefighters will help us in the long term achieve that. Now certainly, I'm not an actuary and we would, at some point in the future, if we're able to raise that cap at the legislative level, we would, as Rick mentioned, have to go through the actuarial process, determine if it does in fact make sense. If it did, our membership would have to approve that, any increase above the current cap of $10,000, which we're at right now today. And then, of course, that would come to the city council at that point in time for ultimate approval and to change the bylaws. But so really, at this point, we just want to be in a position so that we can actually engage and have those conversations and have them be meaningful at our board level. Because right now, we're at the cap, we have no options, and really, a change at the legislature is what we need in order to have that dialogue. We have had some presence at the state auditor's office. Auditor Otto convenes a fire relief working group. We've presented our case there. There's legislative personnel that sit in on that meeting. We have their support to bring this forward to the legislature and actually, they've offered to pen the legislation for us. Obviously, we'd need to have some sponsors. So once, if, assuming that we were to get the support of the council, we would go ahead and bring that and have dialogue with our local legislators. And I know Councilmember Case has already had some dialogue already. We really think that this is a good thing for us to at least explore and have as an option.
Thank you. Do you anticipate that this legislation would be exempting or removing the cap only for Eden Prairie or for any community?
So that's a great question. We would, at least the anticipation from my perspective, would be to make it inclusive of all reliefs. Right now, Eden Prairie is the only relief association that is at the cap.
Oh, okay.
And it's, there's a couple of different factors there. Number one, its size. Bloomington is the largest relief out there, but they're in a whole statutory separate category. And then there's everyone else. And of the everyone else category, Eden Prairie is at the top end of that list. So we're the ones that are kind of driving this. It would impact us immediately, but I wouldn't, I guess, if I had my druther, I wouldn't want to have the legislation specifically point to Eden Prairie. I'd want it to be a broad scope.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ahlo.
My question is, what do you think that the cap needs to be raised to?
Great question. Councilmember, I'm not sure what that's going to be, certainly well above the $10,000. There's an actuarial factor that's going to have to occur and I know our tables are going to change for our 2015 valuation. So for me to comment on that and just to throw, I would really just be picking out a number. It's safe to say that it's not going to go to $20,000, all right? It has to be prudent, has to be supported by the numbers, by the figures from the actuary. And of course, it has to go by support from our membership and then ultimately come to you if we were to. to you if we were to um, have that option available to us. But I can certainly report back to the council and I, and whether that's through Councilmember Case, as long as he remains on the board uh, of the, of the Relief Association, or I have no problem coming back um, and letting you know that, because we really haven't run the, run the figures um, on that now. We just know um, that about ninety-nine percent of all of our firefighters are selecting the defined benefit uh, monthly contribution um, distribution plan. So we want to make it closer. And, and we may never get that movement, because then it'll, we enter into a whole different other discussion in terms of who's carrying the risk, that type of stuff, but at least to make it an option, uh, as we're doing our due diligence for plan and, plan liabilities long-term, I think makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Case?
Yeah, without getting into details either, there's um, there's all those break even points out there that any of us that are close to thinking about when to take social security, you're always like, can't win that break even pieces? And right now, that break even isn't an incentive to have people take this yet. And then there are factors within our plan of spousal, 100% survivorship, so, correct?
Yeah, two, uh, two-thirds.
Two-thirds. And then, uh, so there are those um, unknown liabilities for the plan that can go on and on. So if you can get people upfront, in essence, to incentivize to take that cash settlement, then the risk, you know, slides to them and the fund then can, we can look at that differently in terms of our long-term liabilities, so. And the other thing, of course, we're looking at is, is possibly having that option for every new firefighter that comes in possibly to be automatically a lump sum. I mean, those are all unknown questions out there that we're just, you know, putting out on the table, but right now, just to even have this conversation, as Aaron said, we really need to have the legislation changed so we can look at numbers.
Well, it sounds like a good thing to give us more options and to really have, be a good tool to serve us, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution supporting the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association's efforts to seek legislation that removes or increases the lump sum pension payout cap of $10,000 per year of service.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, we have our Park and Rec Director, Jay Lott Hammer, who's going to walk us through a PowerPoint presentation on citywide special events.
Thank you, your honor, council members. Approaching the podium on the other side of the room is Lindsay Danhauser, and you know Lindsay as our Art Center Supervisor, who took over the Art Center when we had it given to us about six years ago and has done some pretty amazing things with the programs that are there. But in addition, Lindsay also works with our theater programs, she also works um, with some of our groups and organizations within the community to build partnerships, and also works with some of our special events. And we did present this to the Parks Commission a couple months ago, and after doing that, thought that it would be something that the council could find informative. It's certainly not exhaustive of what you can do in this city on a weekend basis, there's plenty of things that churches and schools and private organizations and the Lions Clubs are doing, so um, this is more of what we do as a city organization. Some of it's partnering with other departments like police, fire, and other, other local community organizations like the Lions and Lionesses. So Lindsay will take away and certainly both of us will be available for questions once she's done.
Thank you, Jay. Um, as you guys know, we have quite a range of special events that we put on here in Eden Prairie, but you may not know that about 23,000 people experience our parks and facilities through thirty-six annual special events and over fifty arts and cultural events, which includes our, our Starring Lake Concert Series, our children's concerts and things like that. Um, events generally are free or very affordable and family-friendly activities and entertainment for everyone. And um, as we have talked about kind of earlier this evening, um, we have a lot of great service organizations here in Eden Prairie, and they partner with us on several events. And it helps us to layer in uh, experiences that we as a department would not be able to provide. Um, the Pickleball Club sponsoring the tournament at the Fourth of July, the Noon Rotary and their Rib Fest at our Jazz Festival every year, the Lions Club and their Bingo. Um, we have a lot of great organizations that help us with our events every year, and they also help to make sure that our events are reflecting our community by involving these service groups. So I'm going to take you through kind of a year and events here. We start off um, our year with Rock on Ice, which is in um, mid-January. We actually just had it last Sunday. Uh, generally, this event has taken place at Round Lake Park, but we moved it to Miller Park this year to help capitalize on some of the extra patrons we had in the park because of the ice castles. So um, it's a really fun family event where you um, uh, we have a DJ, a fire pit, smores, and there's just a lot of people on our outdoor rinks, and it's, it's a lot of fun, it's a unique experience. We have our Father Daughter Sweetheart Dance downstairs in the garden room every February. We have a Valentine's Day breakfast at the Senior Center. We have a winter theater production uh, that is uh, produced at the Eden Prairie High School in the auditorium, and generally, the winter show is a drama, murder, mystery. This year, it's an Agatha Christie mystery. We have the Ice Show, and that's a partnership with our Eden Prairie Figure Skating Club, so anybody that's, has taken uh, ice lessons, ice skating lessons at the uh, Community Center is invited to participate. And then our Outdoor Center does their Animal Open House every year, and if you've been, that place is packed, and we've got tons and tons of kids and families in there. Uh, this here is our Chin-Chilla at the Outdoor Center. Um, Park Cleanup Day in late April, a lot of, um, we have several groups and neighborhoods and, and organizations and even just individuals that sign up to clean up our parkland in April when all the snow has melted. Our Arbor Day Walk is part of our uh, Tree City USA designation, so we have a, an event with uh, music and kids' activities and art projects, but we also have a lot of information about tree care and you're also um, planting information, and we give out uh, free seedlings to uh, people that come to that event. Senior Awareness Month is the month of May, and there's several different educational opportunities every year, um, and lots of entertaining events for seniors. Uh, the Art Center Open House is every spring in order to kind of celebrate the uh, the donation of the Art Center and really give the community a chance to come in and see what we do. We have all of our staff there uh, doing um, demonstrations, and we do lots of games and activities for all of our participants. The Mother-Son All-Star Evening is kind of our answer to the Father-Daughter Dance for mothers and sons to get together at our Community Center and do um, more sports activities. Arts in the Park is every May at Purgatory Creek Park, and we usually have about thirty-five vendors um, that do handcrafted arts. We have live entertainment, we do kids' activities and demonstrations, and then also, this year, we've started partnering with the Eden Prairie Liquor Stores to do uh, wine tastings as well. Uh, Splash Time at Schooner Days is a partnership with the Lions Club, um, and then also a chance to show off our, our renovated Round Lake Park. So we um, we do some free family entertainment over at Round Lake Park while a lot of the Schooner Days activities are going on. The Jazz Festival is every June, it's kind of the kickoff to our summer concert series, um, and we have community jazz bands that play. We partner with um, an, an AM jazz radio station, and we also um, partner with the Noon Rotary, so I'm sure a lot of you have been to that event where we have the Rib Fest with the Noon Rotary. Safety Camp, um, there's quite a few communities that now do a safety camp, um, but Eden Prairie is the first community to ever do safety camp. Um, it's a two-day event for kids only going into third grade, so it's very special, and they, they um, go through different stations and, and elements of fire safety, bike safety, water safety, it really runs the whole gamut. Um, and that's well-attended every year. Our Starring Lake Concert Series is Sunday, Wednesdays and Friday evenings in um, in June through August, and we do a variety of musical performances. We try and bring um, kind of mix some of our community uh, groups such as the Community Band with uh, different international groups from all over the metro area. We've had African dance, we've had Japanese drumming, um, and then the other popular cover bands with the Beatles covers and Johnny Cash covers and things like that. Our Summer Musical is um, extremely popular. We do a Broadway-style musical every year outdoors at Starring Lake Park, and um, we have to bus people in. Um, there's, there's um, sometimes up to a thousand people at Starring Lake Park on their performances. Um, we've done over the years Annie, Music Man, um, Dr. Dolittle, and this year, we'll be doing Once Upon a Mattress. Kidstock is our Tuesday morning kids uh, concert series, and we have uh, quite a few of our area daycares bus kids in for this event. There's, it's, it's a really fun um, Tuesday morning activity. Our Children's Theater Workshop is um, a three-week intensive camp for kids interested in, in acting. Um, so it culminates in five performances at the Riley Barn at the end of this intensive three-week period, and a lot of these kids then go on to be a part of our Summer Musical or continue, and we've had kids acting at, at Stages Theater and, and they continue to be a part of it year after year. Itty-bitty beach parties are new this year, uh, meant to capitalize on the beautiful Round Lake renovation, but also the revitalization of Round Lake itself. There's a garden party every June at the Senior Center. And then our huge, amazing, wonderful hometown celebration, Third and Fourth of July. Um, I know you're all familiar with this event. We have such a good time, just even as staff at this event. Uh, live music all day, the kiddie parade, um, with the, with the renovation of the skate park, we've also added BMX bikers, which has been really fun. We've got food vendors, we've got inflatables, and then it, the evening is capped off with our amazing fireworks show. Senior Center BBQ every July. We do three park-in movies in August. Um, as the days start to get a little shorter, we start to do uh, movies at desk with our inflatable movie screen. Splash Time at Corn Feed is another one of our partnerships with the Lions Club, and they do an amazing um, corn feed event every year, and it also has a softball tournament element. And we've just started to add some live music and games just to kind of round out the event a little bit more, and that's uh, a lot of fun also. Our Senior Center does a golf classic in August, a fall lunch in September. Our Eden Prairie Players do a collection of one-act plays in September. Uh, we, at the Art Center, we do an art crawl every September, and then we also, uh, local artists open up their homes as well. Citywide Open House is, the Police and Fire do this event every year, and then the rest of the city does it every other year where we um, we open up the City Hall for information on all of our departments. We have entertainment, games, and um, and lots of jail tours, that's always popular. Um, we have the Fall Harvest Festival at the Riley Barn every year, and that is a great partnership with our Historical Society as well. They give uh, tours and have information about um, the history of Eden Prairie, and we do music, uh, games, concessions, and again, we partnered with the liquor stores on this event this year, too, to do a kind of a fall beer tasting as well. Spooky Saturday, we have the cutest kids, don't we? Um, we do um, we open up the Community Center and we have uh, games and uh, activities, and they're, they're all sponsored by um, different Eden Prairie organizations, our sports associations, the libraries there, different organizations, and the kids can kind of trick or treat at each, at each station. The doctor is mine.
Oh.
And then our other Halloween event is Halloween at the Mall, which provides a safe environment for trick or treating on Halloween. Um, as well, it's a safe environment, but it's also a weather safe environment, so you don't have to bundle the kids up too much, and, and um, it's very, very well-attended. We have live entertainment, Police and Fire are there giving out candy, and then the kids can trick or treat at each store. New this year, you probably heard, the Eden Prairie Senior Center had a flash mob at Eden Prairie Cub Foods uh, the Saturday before Thanksgiving, so it was a little crowded in there. Um, so we had ninety different seniors participate in the practice sessions, but hundreds of people watching. Um, and it, it was just a, a great way to draw attention to the programs that the Senior Center offers and how active our older adults are here in Eden Prairie. And then the Holiday Lunch in December. Uh, the Outdoor Center also hosts a Holiday Boutique with nature-themed um, arts and crafts for sale. Uh, the Community Band has their Share the Warmth concert every year at the Eden Prairie High School, and the public is invited to donate hats and mittens and food that are then dropped off at Prop. And the Outdoor Center also hosts a monthly open house Nature Rocks program, where every first Saturday of every month, they open up the Outdoor Center for free for families to come in and get kind of a taste of what we do at the Outdoor Center, and it's all seasonal, canoeing, fishing, snowshoeing, arts and crafts dependent on, on the weather. And then we also have a very popular Star Watch astronomy program, um, where we have monthly programs, but there's also special events that coordinate with eclipses and, and things like that. And that's it, do you have any questions?
Wow, that was impressive. We certainly better not be sitting around saying there's nothing to do. There is a lot to do. It's really interesting to see, you know, all these programs we've heard about, but it's great to see the numbers, the participants. Um, and a lot of them, I noticed, especially outdoor events, the attendance is pretty variable depending, I suppose, on whether it's really cold or raining, or what the weather conditions are. But boy, you guys are doing a great job, very thorough. Does anybody have any questions for Lindsay?
Kudos.
Yeah, kudos. Thank you for doing that presentation, it's nice to see.
Is that available, like, on our website, or it's just really cool, a synopsis of everything that's available for people?
We can easily make that available.
Yeah, in some way, shape, or form, it is. I mean, we don't have this presentation, but I think we've talked about, as Mayor mentioned, you go to the city calendar and just, you can look at month by month, what's happening, you know, at night on the weekends, and then when you click um, on the calendar, if it was Rock on Ice, Nature Rocks, um, you know, Music at Staring, and then you hit that link, it'll take you to another page that'll give you the details of that event. So we, I think we do a good job of, like, these events are coming up throughout the year, but we don't have, and we could certainly look into, the summary of all the events. Well, what struck me about this was a marketing tool, so you're a Realtor and people come from Atlanta, and you know, what does Eden Prairie have to offer? I have little children, we know about our schools, well, here's, you know, shoot off this um, PowerPoint or this, this presentation. I just think it's pretty powerful.
It is.
It is.
Great, thank you, good suggestion. Thank you, Lindsay. Um, is there any other business to bring before the council at this point? Um, we're, then I will ask for a moment, a motion to adjourn the council meeting, we will be reopening the HRA meeting.
So moved.
Right afterwards. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion for adjournment passes. I'd like to call the HRA meeting to order at eight oh eight. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the HRA meeting held on December second, 2014?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. Uh, the first item that we have on our list would be removed then because we voted to continue District Number Sixteen. So then that brings us to Item Four, which is adopting the resolution for a modified tax increment financing plan for District Number Seventeen, the Rolling Hills Senior, Senior Housing, the Colony. Mr. Getchel, do you want to add anything to that?
Uh, Mayor, I do not, other than the, the HRA must consent to and approve the same actions that were taken at the council level, um, same exact action item.
Okay, any questions for staff? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution adopting modified tax increment financing plan, District Number Seventeen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Is there a motion, is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
I move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, meeting adjourned.